...town council meeting to order. Would you please all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and stay standing for a moment of silence? Okay, item number one. Acceptance of meeting minutes, discussion of possible action and vote regarding the acceptance of meeting minutes from the meeting of October 3rd, 2017, to be accepted and approved by the town council to have a motion to accept the minutes.
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman Justy, seconded by Councilwoman Brady. Any questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it. Item number two. Terrace Street abandonment petition. The third hearing of the town council to consider the approval of a petition to abandon a portion of Terrace Street submitted by Douglas Avenue Associates Incorporated and U.S. Development Two LLC. The petition was advertised on August 11th, 18th, and 25th, 2017 for a hearing. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the petition to abandon the portion of Terrace Street set forth in the petition, subject to the applicant making payment to the town of the amount set by the tax assessor and satisfy all necessary requirements.
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman Justy, seconded by Councilman Faola. Any questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it. Item number three. Plimpton Street abandonment petition. The third hearing of the town council to consider the approval of a petition to abandon a portion of Plimpton Street submitted by the town of North Providence. The petition was advertised on August 18th, 25th, and September 1st, 2017 for a hearing. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the petition to abandon the portion of Plimpton Street set forth in the petition, subject to all necessary requirements.
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman Di Lorenzo. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Brady. Any questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it. Item number four, vendor license. Town council to consider approval... To consider the approval of a vendor license from Rachel Bamber, DBA Bam Novelty to sell flowers on Thanksgiving Day, November 23rd, 2017, at 1394 Menlo Spring Avenue, North Providence, Rhode Island, 02904. Everyone has the application in front of them? Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Bamber?
Make a motion to...
Okay, motion's been made to approve by Councilman Justy. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Brady. Any questions? I'd like to make an additional motion to send a letter to the police department to make sure she is the only one selling flowers because she has applied for the license. So...
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Di Lorenzo, seconded by Councilman Faola. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it. And the motion to approve the license has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number five, victualling license. Town council to consider approval of a victualling license for Oner Osve, DBA Mediterranean Pizza at 2220 Menlo Spring Avenue, North Providence. Is anyone here from Mediterranean Pizza? Is anyone here from Mediterranean Pizza? Is anyone here from Mediterranean Pizza? Okay. Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to the furthest to the December meeting.
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman DeStefanis, seconded by Councilwoman Brady. Any questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it. Item number six, rodent issues. Jennifer Morgan of 21 Top Hill Road and other neighbors wish to appear to address the rodent issue in the town. Ms. Morgan, can you please just state your name for the record?
My name is Sharon Johnson. I'm the owner of 21 Top Hill Road.
I'm Jennifer Morgan. I'm Sharon's daughter. I also live at 21 Top Hill.
Thank you.
We've had a problem for the last couple of years. There we go. We've had a problem for a couple of years. However, this past summer has been horrific. The house... Do you remember the number? 22 Piave. Has... Is breeding rabbits as well as breeding dogs. The rat issue is unbelievable. We came and spoke with Mr. Fossa three weeks ago.
Can I just interrupt you for one second?
Of course you can.
I'm sorry, I shouldn't have mentioned this earlier, but I'm combining number 12 as well.
Yeah, great.
Raising animals for profit. Councilman Americi requests discussion and possible vote regarding the enforcement of the zoning ordinance restriction on raising animals for profit in RG zones. So I'm going to combine those two.
Absolutely.
Okay, go ahead.
And I know the issue has been going on for years, but for us, the problem is new, basically. We spoke with Mr. Fossa, who absolutely was hands-on. He was in touch with Mike Connavalli, who went to the house. He would not allow him to go into his backyard. So he has until this Monday. And if not, I guess Mr. Connavalli is going to go back with the police. But to mention a few other things, because again, we're just waiting for this process and we have until Monday to see if it's set through. But the gentleman, what I have a problem with is the animal control female person, because I believe she has given names to this gentleman here. Neighbors have called her several times and she has said to several of the neighbors, "There's nothing wrong with him. He's in compliance. They told him about the smell. He's not doing anything wrong." Well, what he did was approach the person next to him and accused her of calling. We also know on his Facebook that he has three companies, a breeding company as well as a rabbit company where he's selling, and there's another company, I don't know what it's associated with. However, the people in back of him called in regard to his dog's barking. He had, which I don't think is, a lawyer call that person, asked for her, and it was her father that answered the phone. And he said he was this gentleman's lawyer and that he got the... How he got the name evidently, which I believe, and I'm not accusing, I would like it checked, to see if she's giving names out. The other reason is, we checked onto his Facebook, which was open to everyone. My daughter got on it one day, the next day she couldn't get on. How did he know her name? The host is in mind. How did he know the name in the back? Who gave it to him? It would have to be the dog officer. She has been 100% on this gentleman's side. So I think really that clearly has to be looked into.
Thank you.
Did you want to add anything?
We also have video of the owner of this home throwing the animal feces into a paper street which is behind his house. It starts at Connect and it runs to Top Hill. You have people that live on Paive and Caravelle that are surrounding this. We don't know how long he's been throwing the feces there, but I have three videos of him throwing the feces in there. So if he cleans up the animals, he cleans the dogs, he gets rid of the food, now this street is full of feces. The rats are going to continue to go to this area. I think it needs to be cleaned, because that's a major problem. This is where we're seeing the rats coming in and out of, is this one particular area. And we also have another concern that a neighbor just recently told us, is there's another house in the area that also has six dogs and two pigs. Feces, once again, dog food, major attraction for the rats that are in our neighborhood.
Did you say pigs?
Pigs, yes, pigs. You know, neighbors don't want to put their dogs outside because they're afraid these rats are running around during the day. Children, don't want to bring the children in the backyard because you have rats. It's just, you know, she's owned this house for 20 years, there's never been a rat issue, ever.
All right, thank you for coming before us, and I will say the administration has done a very good job of, you know, trying to be as proactive as possible. As soon as we get calls at town hall, I know the mayor's sending Mike out and, you know, really trying to corral this issue, but it is a people issue.
Uh-huh.
And it's unfortunate cases like this where people refuse to take care of their property and... Councilman, did you want to talk about?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, I mean, obviously I put number 12 on the agenda and that's after hearing not only from Ms. Morgan, but looking into it myself. I do want to pass this down, just for the record. This is proof that her, or these are the companies that her neighbor's running to sell animals for profit. Don't mind passing those down. The area where she lives is listed as an RG-zoned area. The zoning ordinance specifically states that you cannot raise animals for profit purposes in those areas. From what I understand, Mr. Connavalli is supposed to do something or have an answer for them by Monday, but my main concern is just that this gets addressed now, before the winter starts and these animals, these rodents start taking nests in anybody's homes. So I would actually like to make a motion at this time that we... That the zoning official reports back to the town council immediately after Monday with the status of this issue.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilman Americi. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Brady. Any questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it.
Can I add one more thing?
Sure.
I don't know if this fits into anything that we're talking about, but this man also has dogs. I know there is a leash law in the state. Animal Control has been called several times because these dogs are always loose in other people's yards. I don't know if that's something that we can have looked into also. I actually also have pictures too of the dogs in neighbors' yards as well as the rabbit cages, in case anybody wants to look at those.
How many dogs does he have on his property?
He has, as what we know right now, three dogs. I know when Ernie from Animal Control went there, he only has one dog that's registered to the town. But we've seen several different types of dog, dogs in his yard as well. I'm not sure how many puppies he had left. He did have some puppies. We're not sure. It's different days, there's different dogs outside or different amounts of dogs. So to say exactly how many, but in those pictures, there are two rottweilers and one doberman.
Are they always the same three dogs or are they different every time?
Can you just state your name, sir?
I'm Dave Nevz. I live in Connecticut Street. It's the paper street that she's talking about in the last house. And what this gentleman has done is, he removed, he has about 30 rabbit cages. So to get them out of their view, he pushed them close to me. So there, you could gain access, anybody, I give permission, go in my yard and you have a bird's eye view of 30-plus rabbit cages. He just corralled with a polytop. My wife didn't go in the backyard once this summer because it smelled so bad. Not once. So he has three rottweilers that he breeds for profit, and he has a doberman. So he has four dogs of his own, personal pets. He just had a litter of 11 in August. So three weeks ago is when I noticed the three puppies in the backyard laying in the grass, and I said, "What's that running?" Broad daylight, the rats are running around these dogs, broad daylight, eating out of the bowls, the dog bowls.
Councilman... Man, you're home.
Now, we have video, we submitted video on that. We took video of the rats running in and out of the pen where the dogs were staying.
How long has this been going on for?
This started last summer. I spoke to him personally.
With you as well?
He moved in February of '16, so this is his second summer there.
Can you just state your name for the record as well?
My name is Sandra Nevz.
Okay.
I live in Connecticut Street too. He, this year, it's his second breeding litters.
So he moved in two years? Does he own the home?
Yes.
And he moved in two years ago?
Two years ago.
And it started with the rabbits two years ago?
It started, he's moved right in with the rabbits. That was the first thing he moved right in with.
When he first moved in, I made a call to Animal Control and spoke to the woman, and she said to me, "Oh, he's certified, he's a breeder, he has everything that he's supposed to have." And at that time, when we realized he was breeding rabbits, I said, "You know what these attract." And she didn't have any concern. And at the time, when I noticed he had these two rottweilers and dobermans, with no offense, a concern of mine was, I have a child who plays outside. I don't leave these dogs in my yard. Her response was, "They're up to date, they're friendly dogs," whatever. I said, "Listen, I'm a mail carrier. Plenty of people have told me that their dogs are friendly and their dogs fight. There is a leash law in this state. I'll tell them to tie the dogs up." And about a week or two later, they put chicken wire up. So this is their idea of fencing, which you can see by the pictures, another neighbor who's here, who also has two small children, the dogs are in and out of her yard on a daily basis. Several calls made and the same thing's happening.
Excuse me?
The police have been called in one incident.
Can you pass the pictures?
Neighbor was walking with his dog, and he literally like went running screaming, but it got everybody's attention. That's why we were outside, and the police was called, and again, nothing was really said to him. And this happened the summer before. So I don't know, people are just looking the other way, but it was our research that really brought on the fact that they're not supposed to be breeding in our zone, in our area. And we brought it to the... I gave it to her, it brought up her attention.
When I had asked about the rabbits, I said, "Well, is there actually an ordinance?" And she said, "Well, I'll have to call somebody and I'll get back to you." And I waited two weeks, I never heard from her, so I called back again, and she said, "There's no limit as to how many rabbits you can have in this town."
To have, but not to breed for sale. That's the difference.
She knew that he was breeding rabbits, because she said to me, "They're show rabbits. He breeds them for show."
Yeah.
So this woman from Animal Control is well aware of what's been going on at Paive Street, but brushes it on her shoulder and, once again, you can't point fingers, but I honestly feel that she has some sort of friendship, connection, whatever it might be, with this gentleman. And that's how neighbors' names are being given out as well, because it's always her. I've never actually spoken to Ernie regarding any problems over there. It's always been so, as well as the other neighbors.
I have to believe that we, I mean, we... I'm sure you're aware of the well-publicized issue with backyards chickens in this town. That's come before this council several times, and if that's illegal to have chickens in your backyard, rabbits have to fall into the same category, correct?
Can we get your address? Can you give your address to the clerk, because you said you were willing to allow people to go into your yard?
Bird's eye view of all the properties that are involved here, because I'm at the highest point on top of the hill.
If you're on my... You can see everything. The rabbits are to where you are.
That's how close they are.
That's your backyard that's in those pictures?
Leave your name and address.
Those are from...
I'll leave my name.
To the clerk.
Mr. President. Okay, Councilman DeStefanis has a question?
Those are from the neighbor...
Is this the dogs?
That's the dogs. They're loose in her backyard.
Do you have pictures of the cages for the rabbits?
Yes.
Those are inside the rolling folder, the ones of the rabbits.
There's more there than what he has. Look at the ones he has there.
I want to see that.
Mr. Fossa and Connavalli also have whatever videos that we have of the rats as well as him from the feces into the backyard.
Okay.
So Mr. Connavalli has been there. Mike has been there.
He has been there. He got as far as the front door, and told him, he pulled up a lawyer's letter and said that he wasn't allowed on the property, but he told them that he had two weeks to clean up, that he would be back, and that he would be back with the police.
So...
Mr. Connavalli's very good at what he does, so...
So Mr. President, just... Go ahead. So we have a known complaint, but yet, a housing inspector can't enter the gentleman's property without permission. He has to serve him a letter, is that the process? Yeah.
You got permission for Mike, I mean...
Mayor, did you want to add to? Yeah.
So Mr. Chairman, these people absolutely right. We're all over this. I believe that this fellow is coming into court, I don't know me to the date, I think it's Monday night. The problem we have is we're bound by the law. We had to give him so much time, but I can guarantee you this, if he doesn't abide by, and I spoke to the judge already, then we're going to move in, we're going to clean his yard, and we're going to put a lien on his property. We're not going to tolerate this. As far as the young lady that's at the animal control, for the record, she shouldn't be there. We're bound by our personnel and the union, but we're going to be doing whatever we can to remove her also.
Thank you.
So just to let you know, and this is not the first time that we've heard that, well, quite honestly, she doesn't know what she's talking about. So we're doing whatever we can, they're right, and as the young lady said, that they came in, they spoke with Dick. I know Mike's been there a couple of times, and no one should have to live in those conditions, so just, it's difficult for me to say bear with us, but we had to give him X amount of days, because if we didn't, we would have already been in that property.
Thanks, Mayor.
And I'll apologize, I, well, apologize, just ask you to give us the necessary time for the, you have to abide by the law. I'm sorry.
You should get his address, because he said he was willing to let Mike go in his backyard.
I know exactly where this gentleman lives. You go to his house off Windmill. Right down in the end, there's a little color sac down at the bottom there. So his property backs up with the property that's on Top Hill.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Does anybody have any questions, Councilman? Would a good idea be for this council to send a letter to the individual in question with the actual ordinance stating that it's not legal in the town to breed animals for sale? He's already got his people...
Yeah, he's already been cited. Come, he's cited. He's had a lot of money. Like I said, I don't want to say it's Monday evening, he's got a, he's come here, spoke to the judge, he told him, "There's no meetings in here, and that certainly needs to happen on Tuesdays, we're concerned." Then he needs to clean up, if he don't, like I said, we'll go in, own the property.
Okay, thank you.
We can't do it, so that's the problem.
Councilman?
I'd like to just add one more thing. Considering that the person that we're dealing with obviously is not so inclined to follow the rules of the town, I'd hate to put this on somebody else, but I witnessed firsthand, or I've seen firsthand, the video of the rats. Right around dusk, they scurried to the paper street to start feeding on the feces that this guy's constantly dumping there, and they also have video of him shoveling feces into there. So I'd actually like to make a motion to send a letter to DPW and ask if they can go help clean up that area, since we know this guy's not going to do it.
Okay, motion's been made.
Second. Council, that's, if you want, that's fine, but that's not needed, because as soon as we get him cleaned up, anything that's, that belongs to us, any public property, you know, if we got to go down and hose that place down, we'll do what we have to do, so we don't, and again, you can send the communication, but we've been involved in this and we don't need to be reminded as to what needs to be done. It's going to be taken care of, I can guarantee you that. But if you want to send a letter? That'll come to us anyway before they get it.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilman Americi, seconded by Councilman Brady. Any questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
What is the paper street again?
You guys have it.
Connecticut Street.
I'm number seven, the last one.
Okay, and that's the street that he's dumping.
Well, you'll see it from there.
Okay.
Once you go up on like that, remember, as I do with my property, they'll see, there's whole pictures there, you can see it.
Thank you. Okay, item number seven.
Thank you.
Thank you. CDBG Grant, Resolution 17-004. Receiver request for discussion and vote from Kathleen McCabe for authorizing Resolution 17-004 regarding applying for community development block grant, CDBG Housing Rehabilitation Funding.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name's Kathleen McCabe, and I've been working with the mayor's office on the CDBG program. We have been fortunate to be a recipient of housing rehab funding in the past several years, which operates the Johnston-North Providence Home Repair Program. We undertook about eight home repair cases last year. These are zero interest, no payment loans, that they are, the payment is deferred until the house is sold or transferred. So that it really, it's not a grant. We do get repaid, and that repayment goes to continuing to assist other homeowners on home repairs. The CDBG program statewide is making some changes this year, so I do not have a dollar amount that we want to request this year for payment year 2017. They're asking communities like North Providence to apply continuously, so when we get two or three cases of home repair where we've determined that the homeowner is eligible, that we've written a scope of work on terms of the nature of repair. Typically, we do home repairs between $5,000 and $15,000, $16,000. I've noticed in the last year and a half, construction prices have been rising, so we may want to up that a little bit, but generally, we're, you know, under $20,000 for a home repair project. So that we need to, under the new rules, do a continuous application almost on a case-by-case basis. So we're asking for authorization from the council to make continuous application for housing rehabilitation funds. This is the only program I'm presenting this evening, because they've kind of asked us to do early applications for this, and I anticipate coming back in the beginning of the year for the regular CDBG program, and am happy to provide an update on the overall program at that time.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. McCabe? Do I have a motion to approve Resolution 17-004?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman DeStefanis, seconded by Councilwoman Brady. Any further questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number eight, U.S. Census Bureau. Received request from Mayor Lombardi to have members from the U.S. Census Bureau appear to discuss the 2018 census test activities and the 2020 census.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, thank you very much for your time. So we were approached and visited by the individuals that are conducting this new census, and asked for help. This is a pilot program, so I invited them here to fill you in as to what's going on. Also invited them to the League of Cities and Towns. They will be presenting this program to all of the officials throughout the state. So at this time, I'd like to allow them, if you would, allow them to explain to you how we can help conduct this survey.
Thank you so much, Mayor Lombardi, council members, town officials. Thank you so much for having us here this evening. I know you have a jam-packed agenda, so I'm going to move as quickly as I can through this. And so, my name is Georgia Lowe, and I'm a partnership specialist with the U.S. Census Bureau, part of the New York region. And this here is Paul Reyes. He's the partnership coordinator for the New York region. And we're here to talk to you a little bit tonight about the census test that we're going to be conducting in Providence County in early, well, spring of 2018, how you can help and what that's going to mean for Providence County. So I've handed the folders out to you, which contain a copy of the slides that I'll be moving through, as well as some other pieces of information about some of the other programs that we do at the Census Bureau. So, again, thanks for having us and allowing time on your agenda. For those who don't know, the Census Bureau is the leading source of data for the country, for the U.S. government. We conduct a census of population and housing every 10 years as mandated by the U.S. Constitution. In addition to the census that we do every 10 years, we conduct a myriad of other surveys throughout the decade. We have people, permanent staff of field representatives who work for us all the time. They're out there in your neighborhood... They're out there in your neighborhoods, conducting various surveys for this U.S. Census Bureau. So, I wanted to make you aware of that, if you weren't aware. In Rhode Island alone, there are approximately forty-five permanent field representatives who work for us out there, again, in your communities, um, knocking on doors and asking people questions about, um, a variety of topics, among them, employment and unemployment, health, crime, and others. Census data are very important and used for many purposes. The two primary purposes are to apportion the, um, seats in the U.S. House of Representatives and to draw congressional and state legislative districts. The data are crucial for deciding how more than six hundred billion dollars per year is allocated to cities and towns. Moving on, again, I'm moving fairly quickly through these slides. Um, there's a infographic, I don't, I don't know what page we're on, sorry, um, that shows the design for the 2020 census, and the main takeaway here is there are four main pieces to conducting the census. Um, and the first is updating our addresses, so we wanna make sure that we have a, an up-to-date list of addresses that, so we know where we should be counting people in 2020. We've, um, sent out invitations to all municipalities across the country. Your town should have received one, either the town clerk or the planner possibly, uh, regarding the local update of census addresses, or LUCA for short. So, um, and there is a flyer on the left side of your folder about that program, so hopefully, we'll, um, you know, work together to update the, the addresses for North Providence so that we, again, we know where to send the notification about the census when it comes time to do that. The second piece is motivating people to respond, so after we have a complete list of addresses, we need to get out there and spread the word, you know, raise awareness and tell people why it's important for them to respond. That's part of my job. Third piece is actually counting everyone. Um, we'll have people out there knocking on doors, um, if, when the time comes, um, for, for those addresses from which we haven't received a completed census. This time around, one of the things that we're doing that's new is that, um, we're gonna be, we're hoping, we have an online tool, so we're hoping most people will respond to the census online. Um, in the past, it's always been the old-fashioned paper and pencil survey, um, or census. Um, so, we're hoping that most people take advantage of the convenience of being able to do it online, and that will be more cost-efficient in the long run, because we won't need to send people to those addresses to try to collect those responses. Um, so, moving on to the next slide, which gets into the 2018 census test here in Providence County, which is the main reason I'm here. So, throughout the decade, leading up to every census, which is always conducted in the years ending in zero, we do a variety of tests. We have to, to make sure that we're ready for the, you know, for the big census. So, we've done a number of tests. This is the final test, so you could say it's probably the most important test. It's really like a mini census. We're doing, it's a dress rehearsal for the main event in 2020. Providence County was selected as the only test site for the country. It's a good representation, it's a microcosm of the United States, so, um, that's really kinda neat for you all, for a number of reasons. So, what we hope to accomplish from this test is, you know, to basically test everything, test all of the operations, the systems, the, you know, make sure everything's talking to each other properly, all the systems and the field infra, infrastructure, and to validate our design ideas for the 2020 census. So, a couple slides down, there's a timeline, and, um, the timeline shows that in the spring of 2017, we had an initial phase of recruitment where we were trying to hire people for, um, for an operation that took place a month ago, in September, a couple months ago. Um, so, we got through that. We opened an office in Providence. Um, we completed that address canvassing field operation in September, where we updated all the addresses in the county, um, so that we know where to count people. And now, we're really heavy into Phase Two recruitment, which basically means that we're trying to get as many people as possible to apply for our jobs, which are going to be starting in spring of next year, for the main event, the main test, um, that we're gonna be conducting. And so, what we're doing now, part of the reason I'm here, is to raise awareness about these jobs. We've been reaching out to all the municipalities across the county, meeting with folks like Mayor Lombardi and others, um, to try to spread the word and asking for help, um, in, you know, again, spreading the word so that we can build up our applicant pool. We need to hire about a thousand people for this test, and again, the jobs are gonna be spring and summer next year. So, I know this is well in advance of that, and some people don't think that far ahead, so we're having a little trouble building up, you know, getting people to apply. Um, but again, that's why we're reaching out and trying to get folks to, to help us in any way they can. So, uh, we need to, as I mentioned, we, we're gonna be hiring about a thousand people, which is a good, um, a good number, and in order to do that, we really need to build an applicant pool of about eight thousand, so that, you know, when people drop out for various reasons, we are able to hire the thousand people that we need. So, let's see. One of the things I didn't mention is that the, um, application process now is also online, which is new for us, and we're going through some growing pains with that, but we're, you know, we're getting through those, but again, it's really just a matter of, you know, spreading the word so that we can get people to go online and apply for the jobs. It's a great summer job for students, possibly. You do need to be eighteen years old, but we are reaching, reaching out to school districts as well to try to talk to them and engage with students who are gonna be eighteen by next spring, um, 'cause it would be a great summer job. They're very well-paying jobs, even though they are temporary and part-time. So, the next few slides are about the partnership program, which I'm a part of, and really, it's all about engaging the communities, reaching out, creating awareness about what we do, why it's important to participate in the test, and eventually, the census in 2020. Um, it's about empowering partners to spread the word for us, and, you know, and it's about educating folks about, you know, what we're doing. Our partners range from elected officials, uh, we just met with the City of Providence this afternoon, the mayor's office there. We're gonna be engaging colleges and universities to count the students, um, because they are counted at their place of where they're living, which is usually at school on April first, 'cause April first is when the census, is census day. Um, libraries, we have libraries helping us by lending us computer banks, so that we can get people in there to apply online. State planning agencies, community organizations, um, nonprofits, and faith-based, we're gonna be doing a lot more outreach to faith-based, um, individuals to help us, again, spread the word and talk to their, um, communities about the census. Um, let's see. So, again, um, one of the things that we're asking for is help raising awareness within communities, telling people about, about our jobs, and about responding to the census when it comes to their address. We know that just because we send a notice in the mail to someone's house, that doesn't mean that they're going to respond, so we are gonna be relying on the trusted voices in the community, including the mayor, the town, um, council members, the, you know, the faith-based leaders, the business leaders, all the other people that are trusted within a community to tell people that it's okay, it's safe, it's confidential, um, and, you know, hopefully, we'll have a successful test and a successful census as a result. So, one of the things that we offer as a, and I'm getting to the end here, um, as a, a service, a free service to really anyone, but a lot of times, um, people are looking for data, either to write grants or to write a paper if they're in college, or, you know, whatever. Census Bureau has a wealth of data on our website. A lot of times, people don't know how to access it. Um, so, we have, um, an ongoing program that, where we have data dissemination specialists, and they can do workshops for people, they can do webinars, um, they can take phone calls if someone is looking for a piece of data. So, if someone is writing a grant, or sometimes business leaders, or, um, someone who wants to start a business, needs to write a business plan, they need data to back up their plan, that sort of thing. So, we just wanted to make you aware that we can offer something back to you as well in your community. So, um, the last slide shows contact information for myself, Paul, and Anna Maria Garcia, who is the data disseminist, dissemination specialist for Rhode Island. And that's about it. I'm sorry if I rushed, I'm a little nervous, and, um, and I know my time was limited, so I can take any questions if there are any.
Does anybody have any questions? Just long? Go ahead, Mayor.
So, I mean, this is our first stop.
I say our first stop, so we'll be, uh, visiting school department, um, maybe trying to get those that are of age in our youth commission involved, maybe get them a little summer, um, job. Hopefully, they will get involved, um, and to help get this, um, survey completed. So, if there's anyone, I know, um, we have some information downstairs, and we're gonna be posting information. Anyone that would like to, um, help out, uh, secure some part-time work, uh, can just come to the town hall and, uh, seek that information.
Thank you.
But thank you for your time.
I have a question. So, the, the jobs are, what specifically, for data input, or?
So, the jobs that we have that are basically census takers, they would be the people that would knock on someone's door if they did not respond to the census that we sent in the mail, the notification.
Okay.
So, those are the bulk of the jobs. We have, you know, a few field supervisor jobs and, and, but most of them are census takers, and they pay about twenty-one dollars an hour, which is not bad for a temporary part-time job.
Hmm. And how long do those jobs last, summer?
Um, so, approximately six weeks, but for the folks who do a really good job, we will definitely have work lasting throughout the summer.
Okay. All of our information is on the town's website, so if you wanna shoot each of us, council members an email.
Would love to, yes.
I'm sure anyone would be willing to help out and pass the word along.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming out tonight.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Does anybody have any further questions? Number nine, Waste Zero. Received request from Mayor Lombardi to have Waste Zero make a presentation and discuss Simple Recycling. Mayor?
Thank, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, this is a, a new program that, uh, has taken off in Connecticut, in, in some communities in Massachusetts, and we have the opportunity to, um, bring this to North Providence. I asked, um, this young lady from Simple Recycling to come here this evening to explain to this, uh, council as to what this program's all about, also our recycling coordinator, Bob Nascimento. I think this is a, um, great program that we, uh, need to get involved with. Uh, it's gonna save us some money in our tipping fees, and also, um, some of those, uh, clothing goods that are being thrown into the trash, uh, maybe could become useful, uh, to someone else. So, I'm gonna ask that this program be explained to you, and, um, any questions that I can answer, I'll be here.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, council, for having me. Uh, my name is Kristen Brown. I work for a company called Waste Zero. We also work on other waste reduction strategies, uh, but the company that we're working for here is called Simple Recycling, uh, and they are a textile collection recycling company. Uh, so, what, what are textiles? Um, textiles are clothing, anything that I'm wearing. Textiles are shoes, purses, belts, um, pillows, um, fabrics from your home, basically soft goods in your home. Um, Simple also takes other home goods that are in working condition, uh, or toys that fit inside of a Simple recycling bag. Uh, so, it's a way of, um, moving some of these materials out of the waste stream. Instead of burying them, you're able to put them back into the reuse stream, back into the supply stream. The way that Simple works, I'll give you an example of how it would work at your house. So, Simple does a couple of marketing mailings prior to the Simple program beginning. So, you get a, a card in the mail, you get information in the mail that Simple Recycling curbside textile collection is going to be coming soon. It's every other week at the curb, along with your other recycling. Uh, the week before the program starts is, um, a mailing that I think really, really catches your eye. Uh, it's a card, and it's in a plastic envelope, and then it has a pink Simple Recycling trash bag. Uh, the trash bag is, it really serves two purposes. The first purpose is so that you notice it, and you don't think it's junk mail, so you don't throw it away, 'cause you think you're getting something, so you wanna open it. So, I think that's the best thing about it. Uh, but you open it up, and then you read it, and you say, "Wow, I could recycle all of these things that I've been throwing away." Uh, so, Simple collects, uh, along, they mirror your collection route. So, if you, at your home, get recycling collection on Wednesday, then every other Wednesday, when your recycling truck is coming, you could put out a bag of clothing. Uh, so, when the Simple truck comes by, which I showed you a picture there, um, it's a more of an oversized van. It comes by, they do about six thousand households a day, because obviously, not everybody has, um, textiles to put out every day. They come by, they grab the textiles, uh, and they bring them back to a hub warehouse. The hub warehouse, uh, this will be a new region for Simple. It will be located around Taunton, Massachusetts, and the program will begin in early spring. Uh, basically, when the, all of the materials are brought back to the warehouse, uh, the materials are sorted and, uh, put into different categories. So, the better quality materials are sold off to, uh, thrift store chains or thrift stores, or they're sold off to nonprofits like Goodwill or Salvation Army that need material for their stores. Uh, so, they supply material at a low-cost, um, price per pound, so that is the first tier of material, the, the really good stuff. Uh, then the second tier of material, stuff that's still wearable or still usable, um, but Americans might not like it, uh, it goes, it's bundled and it's sent off to Africa or another country where they need the clothing. So, it's stuff that's still good, still usable and wearable, um, someone can use it. For items that are not in such good shape, uh, then there's all other, uh, level of, um, different types of programs. So, stuff could be turned into wiping rags or rags, stuff could be shredded, turned into filler, uh, turned into insulation, turned into carpet padding. So, there's a whole recycling industry out there that needs this material. Even your shoes or your purses can be ground up and, um, turned into basketball courts, so, or playgrounds. So, if you've ever walked on a playground where it's squishy, it could be made of some of that material. So, Simple provides, uh, a free service to communities that partner with them, and then they pay twenty dollars per ton for the material that's collected. So, next year, as of next year, your recycling rate will be, or your, um, your disposal cost will be about forty-six dollars a ton, uh, and you add twenty dollars to that, and that, that's a pretty good shift. So, for every ton you keep out of the waste stream and put into this stream, uh, it's about sixty-six dollars. Uh, the Simple program, uh, targets really the low-hanging fruit, so, uh, the average home throws away still about eighty-five pounds of textiles, or the average person throws away eighty-five pounds of textiles per year, so it's still really significant. In fact, of all of the textiles that are thrown away, we only recycle about fifteen percent of those in the United States. So, this is a great way of getting that low-hanging fruit, and it's a free service to the community. Uh, my job with Simple, I'm consulting for them. Uh, they started about four years ago. It's a young entrepreneur, you'll probably see him on the cover of Ink Magazine, 'cause he's growing like crazy. Uh, they're close to four million households, um, coming up this next year. Uh, he's in markets like Austin, um, Lansing, Michigan area, Chicago, Akron, Raleigh, uh, and I was asked to work on the northeast region. So, we have, uh, we're expecting four hubs in the northeast. Uh, one of them- One of them is Wuber in Massachusetts, which opened a couple of months ago. One of them is New Britain, Connecticut, and that's the PR that I just sent you. So the New Britain hub opened two weeks ago. Then the next one to open will be Taunton, Massachusetts area, which will service lower Massachusetts and Rhode Island. And then there'll be a fourth that's opening in Stamford, Connecticut area, which will service lower Connecticut and New York. So that's the basics on Simple. I brought some sample little bags to give you, so you can see what they look like.
Councilman Giusey has a question.
After the initial bags are mailed to each house, is there a cost for additional bags?
So no, there isn't. What Simple does is when their driver picks up a bag from your house, they leave plus one at your house. So they wrap one around your recycling container, if you've left one, and they leave an extra one. If you leave two, they leave three. If you leave three, they leave four, because they assume that you're a good, you know, recycler. If you, for instance, are moving away, and you know you're going to want to donate a lot of stuff if your kids have gone away and they moved out of the house, you can email them or call them in advance, and they'll leave you 12 or 15 bags, whatever it is you think you need, so that they can pick it up. So it's totally free to residents and to the municipality.
Mr. Council? So did you say that the van follows the trash route?
Yeah, they follow the route. They don't follow the driver. They go faster than the driver, because not everyone puts it out. But they basically will do your route. So like I mentioned, if you put out material on Wednesday, they will hit North Providence, they might hit Smithfield, they'll hit other communities around on Wednesday. So they do about 6,000 homes a day. Not everyone puts out a bag, but...
I had a question.
Councilman?
So besides the reduction in tipping fees potentially, did I hear you say the town gets paid, or we don't?
So Simple pays $20 a ton for the material that's collected. So it's a swing of $66, so you're not throwing it away, and you're getting paid on the other end. It's one of the funnest programs I've ever worked on, and I've been doing it for 30 years, so I have to say. It's easy, it's fun, it's pink.
Does anybody have any other questions? Bob, did you want to add?
I just want to add to this program, my endorsement.
Just state your name, Bob, just state your name for the record.
Please.
Just state your name for the record.
I'm sorry. Bob Nascimento, recycling coordinator, North Providence.
Thank you.
I don't know if you people got a copy of this. It's basically everything that is concerned with this program. And I went through it thoroughly, and throughout the, because I had five questions, they were all answered in this little paraphernalia. One is, what is the cost to the town or the residents? Zero. That is a fact. And it's stated three other times in that, in this particular supplier. I highlighted everything. This is a win-win for two reasons. One is textiles are going in the mainstream trash. As you know, trash is now $39.80 a ton from $32 a ton. It is going to go up another $7 a ton come July 1st. So as much as we can extract out of mainstream waste, the better off we are for our tonnage pay. The other thing is, a lot of people are lazy. They don't want to go up to Salvation Army, they don't want to call somebody to come and pick up their rags. This way here, they're taken out of mainstream, they're put in a plastic bag, they're put out there the same day as the recycling every other week. And my other question was, well, okay, fine, you're going to pick it up, but suppose you miss a house. Who's going to pick it up? The town's not going to pick it up, recycling's not going to pick it up, because they're going to say to the town of North Providence, we want an added cost to pick it up. So they have to pick it up. So there are factors in here where if they miss a home, the home can call an 800 number, and they'll send the truck back out to pick up those homes that they missed, or a home. So I looked at the contract quickly. It was supposed to be emailed to me, but because of a problem, I didn't get it. But I was with Kristen in the back, and I read over it. There are no fees involved. It's a three-year contract. We got to be committed to them, they have to be committed to us. So again, when the, if I get the, the mayor might have the contract. So he can have his attorney look at it, just to be sure, protect the town, and also give a copy to you people. Any questions, or...
Councilman? Just out of curiosity, I mean, I understand that, you know, you're paying the town $20 per ton, but why do you need like a 36-month commitment from the town?
So the Simple Recycling does a lot of the marketing. The mailing itself, just that one mailing is like a dollar a household. So they do three mailings prior to the beginning of the program, and then they do a mailing after the program. And the mailing after the program says, I bet you saw it's got a big picture of a pink bag. I bet you saw pink bags, but you must have missed yours. You know, let us know if you need a bag. So he does spend a lot of money on the marketing, and he just wants to make sure that, you know, he can improve the investment in marketing. And basically, the three years is the standard.
And is Simple the only company doing this, or are there multiple?
Yes, so Simple is the only company doing it. As I mentioned, I've been doing this for 30 years. And when I first heard it, I felt like, you know, wow, no one's tried it. Why haven't they tried it? It's, there's a trick to doing it, and he seems to have it down. So so far, he has no competition. As I mentioned, I, we just opened a Connecticut hub, and all three of the communities that have signed so far, I think there will be about 13 that sign in total in that region, have asked the same question. I do believe eventually, there'll be competition, but for right now, there isn't. So it's their sole source.
Mr. President?
Councilman?
Yeah, I also, I wanted to ask you, how long, you've been in the business for 30 years, you said, and how long has Simple been in operation?
So Simple has been in operation for four years. As I mentioned, he's grown to nearly 4 million households, so he's growing quite quickly. He does have a lot of experience. He's a younger guy, just out of graduate school, but his family was in, owned thrift stores when he was growing up, so he kind of grew up around it. He made a pledge, he wasn't going to do that, but, you know, somehow, he went back to it. But yeah, so he knows the industry really quite well, but it's a newer company.
And regarding the contract, the three-year contract, have any of the communities not, well, it's for three years, so it's a four-year in operation, so you probably don't know. Has anyone made appeal to drop the contract after signing the agreement?
So, so far, no, I've not heard that. But I will say that one of the communities, East Hartford, Connecticut, they'll be signing the contract. The person in East Hartford who was, is the recycling director, she did a lot of due diligence. She actually emailed about 30 of the communities, and she got a great response rate, and she has pulled together a spreadsheet with all of their comments, so I could get you a copy of the spreadsheet. But his references are really, everyone seems to really love it.
Okay, thank you.
Again, it's been one of the easiest things that I've had to work with. It's great.
Thank you very much.
So, Mr. Chairman, I did speak to a couple of other communities from out of town. They seem to be very, very happy with this program. It seems to be working. I think Bob hit it right on the head. It's, it'll be much easier for someone that's got the apparel that they want to throw away, so to say, put in this bag and put it in front of the house as opposed to take it and put it in a bin on the side of the road. It's just the nature. People are just lazy. So I think this will work. I think it'll help us, especially at a time when the tipping fees are increasing now. I think, you know, looked at the contract, and I think we should, I'd like to do it. And I thought I should come to you people, and I want you to see the pink bags on the road and say, what's going on? What is this? So you'll know, I can tell you this, that it's either going to make us money or save us money, so it's either or. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Item number 10, auditor services. Councilman DiStefano requests discussion and possible vote on expanding the services of the auditor. Councilman? Mr. President, I put this on the agenda this evening because I wanted to gauge the council's threshold to consider allowing us to expand the services of the current auditor, so that way, he could be a financial advisor to us in matters concerned in the budget, finance committee, or any other financial-related aspect that we deal with on a daily, monthly basis. And in the current contract, if, and please tell me if I'm wrong, but I believe that when we sign the existing contract, we put in that... Correct. So essentially, the current contract allows for us to expand services, and Mr. Savetti provided an hourly rate. So I would, I put this on the agenda to, one, have Mr. Savetti start attending our finance committee meetings, and then, two, start attending our budget sessions when we go into budget in the spring.
Question?
Councilman?
Do we have, do we have the funds in the budget for this?
I guess the best way I can answer that, Councilman Giusey, is, do we have audit services, line items in our budget? Yes. Do we have the additional increase that would come about him to start to attend our meetings? No. I don't know if it would be that of an exorbitant amount, you know, for us to not be able to figure out where we could get the funds from.
I think we should, not find anything, but I think we should find out what that's going to cost us, to have him attend every meeting of the finance committee and attend the budget hearings, just so we know what we're getting into.
How do you suppose we estimate that?
Well, he knows that we got roughly 12 finance committee meetings, just an example, and we know that they last anywhere from an hour to two hours. You know, what's the cost for you to come out? And then we know what the budget, we know what the budget hearings and all that will, how many days that takes, and how long they last. He could give us, he could give us an estimate on that. I think, anyway, I think he's savvy enough, being a councilman himself, to know, you know, how long these things last.
Councilman, are you asking for him to come to all the finance committee meetings, or all the finance committee meetings during the budget? During the budget.
Okay. Well, not all of the finances, but any?
Well, not all. I mean, when we have quarterly meetings with administration or with the school department, I would like him to be present. You want to put in a formal motion? Correct, so...
What my, is...
Um, so the motion would be to hire Mr. Savetti to attend the budget meetings during the budget session, and also the quarterly finance committee meetings that deal with the town's budget and the school department's budget. Okay, a motion has been made by Councilman DiStefano. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman DiLorenzo. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it. Okay, item number 11, enforcement of ordinances. Councilman Amerigi requests discussion and possible vote regarding the enforcement of certain ordinances related to temporary housing and minimum housing standards. Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I put this item on the agenda more so because it's a specific issue that's been going on off of Charles Street. I believe the address is 1392 Charles Street. For the better part of three months, or maybe longer at this point, there is a homeowner who's allowing people to live in his backyard in tents. I believe, and I could be wrong, I believe it's two people living in the tents. They are starting fires now that it's getting colder. There was an incident a couple Sundays ago where a fire got out of control, and there was an immediate threat to the neighboring house, which the neighbor who's most affected is here tonight to speak on this. They're also using buckets in the backyard to relieve themselves, and in general, just creating a disturbance for the neighbors. Ms. Sanborn's here tonight to discuss this. As you can see, she has a young daughter. This has particularly been of concern to her. And just by way of history, a few things. She has, on her own volition, contacted zoning, contacted the police and the fire department, to no effect at this point. The police did go out, and I believe they ran background checks on the individuals who lived out there. Nothing came up, luckily, but they felt as though their hands were tied, because they see it as a zoning issue. I spoke to the zoning officer myself a few times. He was a little hesitant to get involved, only because he was, I think, afraid for his own safety, in case he went out there, and there was some aggression towards him. And then otherwise, the other thing of note is that with some assistance from our legal counsel, we were able to identify at least, at least three different ordinances that this is in violation of. So I don't think it's a question of whether or not this is allowed. I think it's a question of how we address this at this point.
Can you just please state your name for the record?
Brenda Sanborn.
Okay.
Brenda Sanborn, S-A-N-B-O-R-N.
Did you want to give us a little description?
Oh, I brought pictures because they use the bathroom outside. And there's actually like a bucket that they have that's behind the tent in these pictures, so you can't see it very well, because they have a black tarp over it. They also have a tarp that they put over their tent. And I can't be certain that it's actually two people there, because I've seen up to four people there. So I don't know exactly how many people are there, or who stays there every single night, if it's the same people, if it's different people coming and going. They have ladders strewn about, they have food back there. Like, as he said, they did a fire about two weekends ago. And my concern is that, now that it's getting cold and the leaves are all on the ground, if that fire spreads, it's very close to where I live, to my property line. And if the trees go up, my house will go up as well.
Is, is, did you get in touch with minimum housing?
I contacted the inspector, who in turn called the police department. We've called the police department a couple of times as well. And I've been emailing Mr. Amerigi for about at least two months, but it's been going on for probably over three.
And who was the inspector that you talked to?
I called town hall, and they gave me a phone number. I don't know who it was.
Excuse me, she spoke to Mike Carnavale, and I spoke to him as well, to follow up.
And he hasn't done anything?
He states that although he thinks it's a zoning violation, he's, I guess there was an incident in, off of Woodard Road some years ago, and it turned out that the people who were living in tents there actually had criminal records. So he was a little hesitant to go out there on his own, so it may just be a coordination of services.
And my daughter has a...
Yeah, but just to go to the bathroom in somebody's backyard with a bucket. I mean, that can't, that can't possibly be...
No, they're clear zoning violations, and he admitted that to me as well. It was just, I guess, now it's just pushing the enforcement of said violations.
Councilman? Have you approached the owner of the property and asked him why he was doing it, or...
The owner of the property is an 80-something-year-old woman, who I don't, I can't speak to exactly how she's, but I don't know that she's necessarily completely there. And her, I believe it's her son, is known to the police department. And he is one of the people that you can't speak to either, because he's actually had an incident where he's had like a machete and went on top of one of our neighbor's sheds, and was like King Kong, because I don't think he's mentally completely competent. So I wouldn't speak to them if I had to.
I'm just wondering, how are these people knowing they could squat in these, in this individual's house?
I don't know. That was from the police department. I have no idea how that came about. Apparently, oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Thank you, Mr. President. The police had nothing, they came to him there about that?
When we called, they said that there was nothing they could do. And then, I don't know if it was a sergeant or someone called the house back, and said they would send an officer over, and an officer came over and said that there's nothing that they could do about it, because they weren't breaking any like law. And it was private property. And it was private property.
Going to the bathroom in the public is not breaking the law.
And my daughter can't play in the backyard.
Wheeling a machete on a roof is not against law. I mean, doesn't make a lot of sense.
I mean, I share the frustration. I've tried. I've called. I mean, past...I can't yell at people. I mean, I can only ask them to do...
Yeah, right.
Counselman, do you want to make a motion?
Well, I was gonna make a...
Let me do the police chief.
Yeah, I was gonna make a motion at this time, similar to my earlier motion. I want to make a motion to send a letter to the zoning official, the administration, even though they're here, the town solicitor and the police chief, to make arrangements to enforce the ordinances and take whatever other steps they deem necessary, and to report back to the town clerk.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman Amerigi, seconded by Councilman Juisty. Any questions? Maybe none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
I'm just wondering, listening to this, why the police and the zoning official haven't gone there together? I mean, this is a simple...and to be very honest with you, I don't have an answer. I'm a little disappointed at this point in time why this hasn't been addressed, but I can tell you this, it'll...and Ken, just don't get frustrated and have to bring it here, buddy. Just call us. But I...tomorrow, I can tell you this, that the police and the zoning official will be visiting that property together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item number 13, uncollectible tax. Received letter from tax collector Claudette Mooney for uncollectible taxes for 2006 to be removed from the accounts receivables in the following amounts. $5,564.12 for real estate, $121,186.46 for tangibles, $154,695.82 for motor vehicles, and $2,846.31 for expired legal fees. We have a motion to remove these from the accounts receivables.
I got a question.
Counselman?
I'm looking through the names on here, and there's active business owners today in the town. How is it that we couldn't collect off of them? I'm just curious.
Good question. I mean...
I mean, they're actively...have businesses in the town now. I mean, how did they go this...it's 10 years. I don't know. It went that far.
I mean, I'm not opposed to continuing this to...
I mean, I'm sure they did their due diligence, but...
Counselman DiLorenzo, do you have a question?
Yeah, yeah. $5,564.12 for real estate. Is the real estate...I'm sure the property is still there. I'm sure someone bought or sold the property since then. Why didn't we collect our taxes? Why is it not? I mean, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
Would someone like to make a motion to send a communication or to the tax collector or have the tax collector in a next month's meeting before we...
I'll make a motion for that.
Second.
Okay.
You want to send a letter or have her...
Yeah, I'll make a motion to send a letter to the...
Okay. Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman DiLorenzo to send the tax collector Claudette Mooney a letter to describe why these will be coming off the accounts receivables, and that's seconded by Councilwoman Brady. Any questions? Maybe none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, and I'll also entertain a motion to continue this item to December. Motion's been made by Councilwoman Brady, seconded by Councilwoman Juisty. Any questions? Maybe none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Board appointments, town council discussion, and possible vote with regard to the appointments to be made to the following board. Historic district appointment. Okay, I'm gonna do the other two first. Juvenile hearing, two mayoral appointments, and one council. We have a motion to reappoint Louise Bello.
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made by Councilwoman Brady, seconded by Councilman DeStefanis. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, land trust, two mayoral appointments. Okay, do I have a motion to appoint David Westcott and Anthony Natale?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made by Councilwoman Brady, seconded by Councilman DeStefanis. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The historic district commission, the chairwoman said she spoke to Mike Connavalli about going on the district commission, and I'd like to entertain a motion to appoint Mike Connavalli.
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made by Councilwoman Brady, seconded by Councilman DeStefanis. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Unfortunately, everyone's aware of the passing of Ron MonteCavo, the chairman of the zoning board, and I think it would have been the right move to appoint the Republican alternate, but unfortunately, it's not listed on the agenda, so we will be having a special meeting within the next few weeks dealing with the solar project, so at that moment, we'll appoint the alternate Republican to the full-time position on the zoning board. Any questions on that?
Thank you.
Item number 15.
Wait, wait. We got a letter here from Vanessa Garcia, asking us to appoint Gisele Polanco in her place on the juvenile justice board. She's the one that resigned. And she wrote a letter recommending Gisele Polanco from 62 Hobson Avenue.
An email?
Yeah. I'm gonna read it here for Vanessa Garcia.
Okay, can I have a motion to appoint Gisele Polanco to the juvenile hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made by Councilman Juisty, seconded by Councilwoman Brady. Any questions? Maybe none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number 15.
Wait, wait, wait. We're not done yet. We got a letter from the mayor, reappointing David Westcott. Did you do that?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't hear that.
Item number 15, Finance Committee report, Town Council discussion and action with regard to the Finance Committee report to be presented by Councilman DeStefanis from meetings of October 16th and October 23rd, 2017. Counselman?
Mr. President, passing the minutes along to everyone on the council. Along with the minutes on file at the clerk's office is paperwork presented by Mr. McNamee on the 16th, and also the paperwork presented to us on the 23rd by the Towns Control in Maria Valley. On October 16th, the Finance Committee met to discuss the upcoming...update concerning the school bond and the school department's existing budget. Mr. McNamee presented the committee with the status pertaining to the unaudited financials for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2017, and also provided us with an update on the current budget status for the 2017-2018 budget. Mr. McNamee also provided us with the summary on the building project and the expenditures with that project, the school rebuilding project. On October 23rd, the Finance Committee met, and this time we discussed the status of the town's current fiscal year budget. Maria Valley was in attendance, as was the mayor, and they provided us with an update concerning the town's budget status, along with the first quarter review, which is on...will be on file in the clerk's office. So, Mr. President, at this time, I ask that the minutes be accepted as is.
Motion been made by Councilman DeStefanis. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Brady. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number 16, Ordinance Committee Report. Town council discussion and possible vote with regard to the ordinance committee report and approval, denial, or referral of items within the said report to be presented by Councilman Juisty. Next four items are part of the ordinance committee report. Counselman?
Okay. Item number one was no through trucking on East Avenue. The committee recommend an ordinance be drawn up by council for passage. Number two, planning residents for not using containers for garbage. That was tabled until further study is done. Item number three, tax stabilization for agreement for Lyman Lofts' one-year extension was motion to approve contingent on Finance Committee decision. That was unanimously passed. Item number four, allowing Grated Mix to stay open until 2:00 a.m. We have a letter submitted by the Chief of Police. If we could have it read by the...read it to the record.
Councilman Dino Orellillo, Town Council President. Dear Council President Orellillo, I am receipt of your correspondence regarding extending hours for entertainment and serving liquor. Thank you for the opportunity to weigh in on the issue before the Town Council regarding extended hours for entertainment and serving liquor from 1:00 a.m. until 2:00 a.m. It is reasonable to believe the extension of these hours from 1:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. would attract individuals from surrounding communities who may already be under the influence of alcohol to North Providence. It is likely the sole purpose of these individuals traveling to North Providence would be to further indulge in consumption of alcohol in our town. The potential exists for an increased amount of impaired drivers entering our town to take advantage of the 2:00 a.m. closing. This subsequently creates a public safety concern for residents sharing the road with an impaired motor vehicle operator. It is also worth mentioning, common sense dictates increasing the time alcohol may be served increases the amount of alcohol that may be consumed. Cognitive behavior, reactionary time, and decision-making are all negatively impacted with increased consumption of alcohol. Although this is a policy decision, the Town Council ultimately decide, please consider the ramifications and adverse effects of extending the hours of serving alcohol beverages from 1:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. The quality life, safety of our residents, and contact with law enforcement are all areas that need to be considered. Respectfully, Colonel David P. Tocoin, Chief of Police.
Okay, the committee also recommends that that not be passed and be denied, and that was unanimous by the committee. Number five, no parking on High Service Ave., pole 23 and 24. That's a State Road, High Service Ave., so I'll have to go to the state to decide that. Ordnance...I mean, number six was ordinance for no parking in front of Nine Splicer. The committee recommended approving that, having an ordinance drawn up. And number seven, ordinance for four-way stop sign at Gillon, Lincoln Ave., and Adam Street. Recommendation was for an ordinance to be drawn up for that. It was passed unanimously. That's it. It's a minute.
A motion's been made by Councilman Juisty to submit the ordinance report. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Brady. Any questions? Maybe none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number 17, introduction of ordinance 17-014, an ordinance of the Town of North Providence entitled "Through Trucking Trucks Over 9,500 Pounds Gross Weight prohibited on East Avenue in the Town of North Providence." We have a motion to introduce the ordinance and advertise for public hearing at the December 5th, 2017 Town Council meeting.
So moved.
Motion been made by Councilman Juisty. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Fioa. Any questions? Maybe none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number 18, introduction of ordinance 17-015, an ordinance amending Chapter 19, Article 10, Section 19-47 of the Code of Ordinances entitled "Four-way Stop Signs" to allow for a four-way stop sign at the intersection of Gillon Avenue, Lincoln Avenue, and At...and Adam Street. I'd like to entertain a motion to introduce the ordinance and advertise for public hearing at the December 5th, 2017 Town Council meeting. Motion been made by Councilman Juisty. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Amerigi. Any questions? Maybe none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number 19, introduction of ordinance 17-016, an introduction amending Chapter 19, Article 7, Section 19-30 of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of North Providence entitled "No Parking on Certain Streets Generally," to provide for certain parking restrictions on Splicer Street in the Town of North Providence. We have a motion to introduce the ordinance and advertise for public hearing at the December 5th, 2017 Town Council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Brady, seconded by Councilman Juisty. Any questions? Maybe none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number 20, introduction of ordinance 17-017, an ordinance amending ordinance 15-011 entitled "Establishment of a Tax Exemption and Tax Stabilization Agreement for Property Located at 184 One Asketucket Avenue, North Providence, Rhode Island." We have a motion to introduce the ordinance and advertise for public hearing at the December 5th, 2017 Town Council meeting.
So moved.
Motion been made by Councilman DeStefanis. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilman Juisty. Any questions? Maybe none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number 21, Town Council Chambers Refurbish Committee. Town Council discussion and possible vote with regard to the report of the Town Council Committee to refurbish the Town Council chambers and approval, denial, or referral of items within said report to be presented by Councilwoman Brady. Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to thank Mayor Lombardi, his Chief of Staff, Mr. Fossa, for their support for this project, as well as our Director of Public Buildings, Jim Feroli, for all of his hard work and for the excellent job he's done. He's worked very, very closely with our designer, Libby Slater, to be sure that the upgrades that are planned are not only aesthetically pleasing, but are practical, and will better serve the needs of the town moving forward in terms of also improving access to better technology. Last night at our ad hoc committee, we had a review of the plans that you have before you right now by our designer, and also our Director of Public Buildings. You also have the minutes from that meeting at your desk. Are there any questions concerning the plans for the refurbishing project? All right. Not hearing any questions. I also want to thank everyone on the council for their support of the project and for the ad hoc committee for the meetings that they've attended as well. I would like to make a motion to approve the plans for refurbishing the Town Council chambers as presented.
I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Councilman Fioa. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And I have one more motion, Mr. Chairman. A motion to request that the town clerks send letters to the zoning and planning boards, as well as the courts, informing them of the dates that the chamber will be closed, and to reassign their meetings to the assembly room.
So moved.
I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilman Amerigi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Item number 22, claims submitted. Town council discussion and possible vote with regard to claims received from Rita Chicarella of Seven Hill Street, North Providence. Councilman Fioa?
Thank you, Mr. President. We had two claims presented for review this evening. Mrs. Chicarella's claim is pending. Further information is going to be continued. And Mr. and Mrs. Bowman, that is also going to be continued.
Okay. Any questions? No? Okay. Item number 23, Claims Committee Report. Town Council discussion and possible vote with regard to the Claims Committee Report and approval, denial, or referral of claims within said report to be presented by Councilman Fioa. You already did that, so...
That's what that was.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Seconded by Councilman DiLorenzo. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.